Call to order the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting for May 23, 2013. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the essential of perfect friendship among the American people.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the regular meeting agenda. Are there any changes that need to come?
No, I just wanted to point out to the commissioners since Tuesday what we did add to the agenda. It says under new business, item F is approve/disapprove appointment of one member of the Hiller Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees. This is the position that's currently empty when Mr. Lydic resigns.
So is this just to fill his term until June 30th?
And so then it'll be reappointed July 1 for a term of one year to get it in line with the others.
Okay.
But that's the only item we added. We added it before the 24-hour requirement period and posted it on our website and on the front door. So we met the requirements of statute, but I just wanted to point it out to you that we did add that item.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the regular meeting. I would approve that we approve the regular meeting agenda.
Can I second? There's a motion, second, to approve the regular meeting agenda. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say in five, say in aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R-1336. This is our preliminary budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014. John, you went over this on Tuesday.
Yes.
Have you had any changes?
The only thing that we've changed in the packet, nothing to what we went over on Tuesday, the general fund, the corrections, the road department, that recommended budget is what we're looking at, having you approve today. The only thing that Linda did is, in the packet that we gave you and we made the adjustments to this one, is we didn't carry forward the balance for the Cory Caminos because they're on a different year, a different fiscal year. They're on the federal. It goes from October 1 to September 30. We don't change their budget in this budget with ours as we do it. What we do is we take any unexpended funds or expected funds that will be carried over and just put that in as their new budget from June 30 until September 30. And then sometime before September 30, we'll receive their budget for the next grant year of October 1 through September 30. And then we'll come in front of you with a bar adjustment, a resolution for a budget adjustment, and put in that new budget. And so Linda went ahead and found that she was going through that that carryover money hadn't come in, so she went ahead and made that adjustment. Doesn't affect the overall budget, that's grant funds, federal dollars, and so it doesn't lower, doesn't change our transfers or anything that happened on the general fund. And then the only other thing is she just verified that the transfers were right. They were right in the general fund, the amount we had of that $2,225, and she just verified them down through the departments to make sure they all matched up.
You made that change of that $8,500 versus the $88,500?
Right, there was a typo. You thought your fat finger had gotten away.
That finger reduced, oh, the 88, and that was on the requested. And so, yeah, so we were okay. So it doesn't affect the recommended. So we looked at that. We've looked at everything. We feel the recommended budget is where we need it to be. It is no changes over, like I said, the current budget really taking, it does take into account the 15% increase that we've been told we'll have in health insurance. We are looking at going out for...
Yeah, the two carriers.
We are looking, well, we are looking at going out for an RFP for the health, for our health plan, for our employees, to see if we could get maybe go with, if we went straight with Blue Cross or we went with another entity, if we can reduce the premiums that we're having to pay and some of the co-pays our employees are having to pay without reducing any of the services that are provided. We don't want to reduce any of the benefits. We want to make sure they still have all the same, but we're trying to make an attempt because not only did the premium go up 15%, but I know on Blue Cross, Blue Shield, the family, or individual deductible was $400, now it's going to be $700. It's going to be the individual deductible, it's going to go from $1,200 for a family to $2,100 for a family. So it's a big change. As the county paying 100%, we absorb the 15% increase, but we don't absorb that family, that deductible going up. So we want to see if we can go out and get a plan that'll keep the deductibles where they were or lower them for our employees and also lower the premium that the county has to pay. But like I said, we don't want to sacrifice. So if that happens, we're looking at probably a January 1 timeline for that to take effect if it can go in. We're going to go out for RFP now. If we get somebody, we'll make a transition. We have to give 90 days notice to the state to transition. And so we may see a reduction and some savings in the budget for the healthcare, but right now we're budgeting. What the hospital was saying, they went from where they were to straight to Blue Cross, and they're seeing a 10% reduction in their current premium. So for us, that might be a 25% savings. If we can go 10% off of the current year and not what that new elevated rate is, we would see a 25% savings in the budget.
But I think you're pretty much seeing that nationwide with all the federal law changes coming in.
Yeah.
That's just what we're seeing.
So that's one thing we're looking at. The way this budget is prepared, we cover our 3/12 reserve, and then we've got about $70,000 above then. So we've met the requirements of the state as having a balanced budget. So I don't think there's any issues. It's conservative on the revenues. We'll get better numbers before July 31, like we said, spend more time. Mr. Villa should get the certified values by then from the state with essentially assessed numbers in them, so that way we can get a truer picture. What he usually does for me is tries to run the yield control formulas. We can get an idea, an estimate where our tax rate will be at, and we try and figure on a conservative basis on that until we get the true tax rate in. So that's what the changes will be for July 31. And then we can look at what can we do based on what was requested by the departments if we can include any of that into the final budget.
Okay. Thank you. It's a pleasure of the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution Number R-1336.
And I would second that.
The motion is second to approve Resolution R-1336. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say in five, say in aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now we're going to have our first public hearing of the morning. This is an open public hearing and discussion regarding the adoption of ordinance 13-02 entitled "Pledging the Distributions of Environmental Services Gross receipts Tax Bonds Received by the Grant County, New Mexico from the New Mexico Department of Taxation Revenue," present to Section 7-20E-17, NMSA 1978, "to Repayment of the Southwest Solid Waste Authority Waste System Improvement and Refunding Revenue Bonds, Series 2013. Ratifying Actions Here to Foretaken, Repealing All Action Inconsistent with This Ordinance and Authorizing the Taking of Other Actions in Connection with the Pledge of the Pledge Revenues to the Series 2013 Bonds."
Good job.
Yeah. So we're pledging those monies, but we're not actually using those money. So that's kind of our backup on the bonds.
Yes.
Backstop.
The, what this does is the Southwest Solid Waste Authority already has loans out that originally were taken by pledging the environmental gross receipts tax bonds from the Town of Silver City in Grant County when it was originally created through the JPA of the entities, as well as they had loans from Grant County and the Town of Silver City to get started that they've been paying us back a little bit. We take a deduction on our monthly bill to help reduce that loan cost to, from them. What this does is they're going to go out, they're going to refinance all those loans, compile them into one bond issue, put money in there for doing the new cells, the design and construction of the new cells, pay off some loans they have for equipment. They've got a loan with Caterpillar Equipment on one of their earth movers and compacters they have. And so they'll combine it all and get all that paid off. And so what this does for Grant County is it pays us back the loan that's currently owed to us that we're getting in small increments each month. So that's about $120,000 we'll receive right away from them. And then going forward, it relieves our gross receipts tax, our environmental gross receipts tax, from being intercepted at the state level to pay off the loan they have to where we'll start receiving that. And all we're pledging is that we'll continue to use those monies or monies we have to pay our solid waste bills, which our environmental gross receipts tax brings in about $150,000. We pay about $170,000 to $180,000 a year in solid waste fees. So there's no problem in that. We will pay them an equivalent amount to what we receive in environmental gross receipts tax every year. And so that's all that's saying, is that we will make sure they receive that because then they'll turn around and use that money that they're receiving from us to pay back their payment on these bonds. And so for Grant County, the effect is positive because we received $120,000 right off the back that is owed to us.
And the effect is also positive for Southwest Solid Waste Authority because they will be able to start building their reclamation fund, which they're...
Yeah, they'll reduce their interest rates they currently have got out there on all their different loans, and then also have the funding to build the new cell and start constructing it, because that seems to be one thing that doesn't go away, is trash keeps coming in the front gate and the cells get filled up pretty quick. So they'll be able to do that and start building this reclamation fund they're required that as soon as the landfill is full, they go back and they reclaim the dumps, cover them, cap them, so that they can't, they don't affect the environment, which right now they're lined on the bottom. They just cap them on the top. Similar to what they're doing in the tailings down in Hurley, cap it off and make sure nothing can flow or come out of it, contamination, then they monitor it for several years after.
Okay. This is the public hearing. If anybody in the audience would like to testify on this issue, you may. Okay, then I will accept the motion.
Sheriff, I would make a motion to approve ordinance Number 1302 stated above. I'm not going to read it again.
Can I second? Okay. There's a motion to approve ordinance 1302. We've been through it. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say in five, say in aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearing number two. This is an open public hearing and discussion regarding an application for a variance from the county subdivision regulations from BT Enterprises for the Wind Canyon 2 subdivision Phases 4 and 5. John, do you want Anthony to go over that? Or do you want...
Yeah, go ahead and do this brief description in your recommendation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the variance is actually to try and satisfy, actually, the commission asked and gave me a task to try and come to a resolution to try and get the roads in Wind Canyon 2 subdivision to where the Grant County could actually take them for maintenance. When we did the estimates, the estimates were pretty high, and the developer had some issues in trying to get all of the funds necessary to complete those roads. So what I attempted to do was try and find a spec to try and utilize some of the material out there because in my, in my experience, the base course that we're putting on the roads doesn't, in a lot of instances, doesn't really assist in making a good compacted road. And we have a lot of issues in the area, especially with the dry weather, with a lot of corduroy roads, and so we would try to relieve that. And even Grant County in itself, we don't use base course when we're, even though we get at a reduced price, we don't use base course on our roadways for exactly the same reason that I don't feel it's designed to leave uncovered. Base course is designed to place asphalt on top of. The reason for its design is so that underneath asphalt, you can, the water can drain underneath asphalt structure. Otherwise, you have failure. The subdivision regulations require that you have base course on top of a, what would be called a type C-class subdivision. And so when I went out to look at the subdivision, there's a lot of places where I felt that, excuse me, that the existing material would meet a base course spec. So I went back to the books. I looked in the ASHTO manual and found that there is a Class D base course that is used for a lot of rural roads, for instance, and roads. I think even the Forest Service, I think, in some instances has used a Class D type spec, but it allows, it allows a wider range of aggregates in each percentage of the material. And so with that, we did some testing out there. We had a certified tester here with Summit Technologies here, they're a local testing company, they're a reputable company. They did some testing. I got, I had several conversations with the owner, and we came to the conclusion that a lot of that material can be used out there without putting base course on it. We'd actually have a better compaction. The R value is high, the R value is where the road actually has, will not fail in different type of instance, whether it's dry or really wet, it won't fail. And so with that, we had several meetings with BT Enterprises, went over what I had found, and tried to come to some conclusion about certain areas. Not all of the subdivision meets the criteria. There's only certain places where the material will actually meet the spec that we're looking for. And so I had a meeting with the contractor, the contractor hire, to actually do the work yesterday. He has another material that is tested, and using a similar material is now, we're going to cover using a material that's pretty much the C-spec material. So we're going to have a mixture of what I call a Type D material and a Type C material. We're going to work for those things. There are some places out there that have a lot of clay in there. We're going to cover those places. We've got some places that have a lot of oversized rock. We're going to cover those places. So overall, I think we have a good plan to get a good road out there for the residences and still be able to reduce the overall cost of placing base course over all of those roads. I know there's probably some question about how I came to those conclusions, and I would like to tell the commission that I actually have a dual certification in soils testing, asphalt and concrete testing from Western Technologies and from the New Mexico General Contractors Association. So hopefully, hopefully we can get a good road out there, get to where the county can maintain. I think that's the biggest issue, is that the lack of maintenance on those roads. I think the roads are pretty, in reasonably good condition right now. I mean, there are some washboards out there, but actually the actual structure of the road, I think, is intact, so.
Any recommendations?
My recommendation is that we, that the commission accept the variance.
And if I may, and just so that it'll be understood, a second opinion was given on this, you said.
Yes, we, all the testing was done by an independent contractor.
Okay. I guess my question, Anthony, would be along the lines of, I've only been here two and a half years, and this will be our first variance that we grant. Now, that being said, I'm not totally, I'm not against it. However, if it's better to have a rural road built out of the D-class base course, then I think that we need to look at revising our subdivision regulations to where we wouldn't have a variance to do this. It would just be a normal activity of business. And I'm not saying that we ought to do that instead of this today. I'm saying that we probably need to look at those in the future, because once you've done this for one, then we're going to see variance after variance, and I don't want to see that. I want to change it. If this is better, then let's do it the better way.
Mr. Chairman, I think that I've been on the subdivision review committee for about, I guess, 12 years now, and before, been before several commissions, and I've always recommended that the base course is not designed to leave uncovered. And several other different counties, I think, have been able to come up with standardization because of what the materials that they have. Grant County is a little bit unique in that we've got so many different types of soils, and some places are just nothing but rock, where we would have to have a good base material. But I think there's a lot of places that have material that works just as good as base course does, or just actually better because it compacts better and doesn't segregate at some point.
So does the subdivision review committee, does that review the regulations, or does that actually go out and review the subdivisions?
Well, usually, they're the first ones to hear a variance request, so that's why I brought up the subdivision review committee, because most of the time, they hear the variance first, make a recommendation to the commission.
Is that...
Not, no, not... That's usually when the subdivision is first started.
Right, okay. So probably what we'll do in the next couple of weeks is we'll come up with a group, probably, Commissioner, if you'll take the lead on that for me.
Sure.
We'll put together a group and we'll rewrite some of those subdivision rules to implement some of this stuff. And obviously, you'll be in on it, and the attorney can't get away from it. So we'll do that in the next couple of weeks. All right, it is a public meeting. Does anybody have anything to add to that?
Just like, I've driven those roads, and they are pretty decent. A little bit of trading is going to help out a lot.
A little bit of luck.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
More luck. What's the wishes of the commission?
Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the application for variance from BT Enterprises for the Wind Canyon 2 subdivision Phases 4 and 5.
I would...
I'm sorry.
If we possibly...
Go ahead.
I do recommend that we do that, just a little bit to tie it into the planner's...
I got it.
You want to renew your motion?
I'd like to remove my first motion and renew it with, I make a motion to approve the application for variance in accord with alternatives and requirements recommended by the Grant County Planner in this memorandum dated 5/8/2013.
I would second that.
All right, there's a motion in a proper second to approve the application for variance from BT Enterprises for the Wind Canyon 2 subdivision Phases 4 and 5. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say in five, say in aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you all for coming today. Yeah, I'm going to have to let you go, okay? All right. Now we're going to move into the public input section of the meeting. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question-and-answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. So at this time, is there any public input? Come forward, sir, and please state your name for the record.
My name is Steve Gregel. I represent the county workers as well as the 911 operators. When you're considering your budget, these employees have not received a raise in over four years. They said there was a freeze, even though my understanding is some individuals got a raise. I would ask that you consider that for the simple fact they haven't received a raise in four years. I don't know which commissioners sit on the board for 911 operators, but we have some retention problems, and at your next meeting, I'd like to address that if we could.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move along. Item 8, minutes. Approve or disapprove the May 7, 2013 work session minutes, and approve or disapprove the May 9, 2013 regular meeting minutes.
Sheriff, I may, I can make a motion to approve both the May 7, 2013 work session minutes and also the May 9, 2013 to regular meeting minutes.
Can I second? The motion in proper second to approve May 7, 2013 work session minutes and May 9, 2013 regular meeting minutes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say in five, say in aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Financial reports. John went over the financial reports on Tuesday. He had to step out to go to a fifth grade graduation, so...
He was threatened by his wife.
We had one extraordinary expense for the conference center, and everything else was normal. It's a pleasure of the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the May 20, 2013 expenditure report.
I'll second that.
His motion is second to approve the May 20, 2013 expenditure report. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say in five, say in aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. New business. Approve or disapprove a proclamation recognizing June 1, 2013 as National Trails Day. And Randy, would you read that first?
Whereas interest in outdoor recreation opportunities, including walking, bicycling, hiking, and horseback riding, is appealing to more and more Grant County residents and visitors. And whereas trails and open spaces enhance the quality of life for our citizens, increase tourist activity in the area, and provide alternative transportation routes for non-motorized vehicles. And whereas trail activities are enjoyed by people of all ages and abilities and are an important part of Grant County's outdoor recreation resources. And whereas engaging in regular outdoor exercise is known to improve health and well-being. And whereas our trails are beautiful, valuable, and represent an integral part of daily life for education, fun, and fitness. And whereas National Trails Day is a chance to increase public awareness of trail opportunities and diverse outdoor recreational activities, and promote the importance of a local and national network of trails and greenways. And whereas citizens and visitors are encouraged to participate in the scheduled Trails Day activities to strengthen their commitment to preserving the natural, scenic, and recreational qualities of our trails and open spaces. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Grant County Board of Commissioners recognizes June 1, 2013 as National Trails Day, and urges all citizens and visitors to make walking, hiking, or bike riding on local trails a priority activity for themselves and their families. Signed and sealed this 23rd day of May, 2013, in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico.
Thank you very much, Randy. Is there anybody here that represents, please come forward and state your name. Come on, everybody come on up. Yes, I understand.
Hi, I'm Nancy Cliff. My supporters and friends here, Linda Ferrara and Michelle Giesi, are pulling out a banner that will tell you to celebrate National Trails Day Saturday, June 1, 2013. And I have flyers here if I can distribute them. Would that be all right?
Okay. Let everybody from the press get one. Can you say something, like you like to hold it open?
It's going to be a really fun day for family, everyone.
Thank you.
At Pober Performing Arts Center.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Well, I'd just like to make a comment. I'm really glad that you're doing this. I know that our families, we live here for, my son's a fifth generation here, and we've always enjoyed our trails. But I would like to ask you to really get involved with the Forest Service in trying to keep all our trails open. You know, with this, with this TMP travel management plan, there are going to be some trails that will be closed on some of the alternatives. So I would really like to ask you to please write them a letter to keep all trails open so that we could keep enjoying our forest.
We agree with you. We like to keep trails open too, but Saturday on the 1st, we have a guided hike at the Dragonfly Trailhead and a bike ride at the Dragonfly Trailhead, both starting at 10 o'clock. We'll have some bikes available and bring helmet, hat. There will be some water there. The big event is at Pober Performing Arts Center at noon with Dr. Richard Kozel, who's been recognized by the White House and Michelle Obama. He will talk about enhancing individual, family, and community life. We have wonderful raffle prizes. We have free food. We have a free trails guide and film premiere. It's a 48-page trails guide, which we've never had here before, and it's been recognized by an organization in Albuquerque for prescription trails, which means that doctors can write prescriptions for... prescriptions for certain, you know, exercise requirements, 20 minutes a day, three days a week, for instance. And we're really very proud of it. It's been made possible by Freeport and the Health Council and Community Enhancement Fund. So we hope lots of people can come out. Thank you very much.
How does somebody join the American Hiking Society?
Well, they are... Actually, National Trails Day, this is the 36th year of National Trails Day. We are registered on their website. You can go to the website, which I don't have, but just Google "American Hiking Society", and it'll come right up.
This is one of, if I may, Sheriff, you know, this is one of our real draws to Grant County, is our trails, and that's what they come here for, because of our climate, because of our people. And so I would highly recommend everyone support it, turn out. And those who are not hiking, Nancy and I generally cross paths hiking in town, but we both know that each other hike in the mountains too. But, you know, this is economic impact, so it's important that we support it. And also, I would like to... And I don't remember the dates, but it's a part of this, is DOT is gonna be having a hearing on that portion of road, was it 35 that goes up towards Pino Salto and stuff? And I can't tell you how many times I've seen cyclists and walkers having to jump out of the way of traffic into rocks and weeds and stuff. So I would highly recommend... Did you have the date?
Well, there's a meeting today on Route 15.
Today?
Yeah, right, at 6 o'clock here.
I highly recommend that people go there and do some input. It's really important, because I've seen some near accidents there, driving up that road every day, going to court. And students, to hikers, to cyclists. So I appreciate everyone going.
It's also about health, and, you know, in our community, we have problems with obesity and diabetes, and walking is easy and cheap and readily available. And this trails guide will also talk about walking on tracks, including the Cobre Track and Fox Field. Those are both trails that are in the trail guide. So we really encourage people to walk at whatever sort of pace and whatever level of exercise and, you know, strenuousness. So hope to see you all on June 1st. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
If you'll just remain right there, we're gonna hand you this proclamation as soon as we vote on it.
Okay.
All right, so if I can get a motion?
Mr. President, I would like to...
Chairman.
Chairman.
Chairman, I did not get in the...
And I've been to so many meetings this week, and talked to so many presidents, and also, I apologize, Chair. Mr. Chair, I would like to take this opportunity to approve the proclamation recognizing June 1, 2013 as National Trails Day.
And I would probably second.
There's a motion and a second to approve June 1, 2013 as National Trails Day.
You gotta buy me a line for that.
If I get the raise with it. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, let's get down.
They'll be available on June 1st. Thank you very much. Happy to be here.
Yeah, no doubt.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approve or disapprove the appointment of three members to the Grant County Protest Board pursuant to NMSA 1978-7-38-25. We went over these individuals on Tuesday. Sylvia Mikes was the alternate, and Georgia Barap and Tal Chiano were the members, and it was all two-year terms. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the appointment of three members, and Sylvia Mikes being the alternate.
I would second that. His motion is second to approve the new three members to the Grant County Protest Board. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove the appointment of one member to the Hila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees? This is an appointment that would just be for the remaining term of the Ulytic seat.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the appointment of Freddy M. Rodriguez to the Hila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees.
I would second that. His motion is second to approve Freddy Rodriguez to be a member of the Hila Regional Medical Center Board of Trustees, and that would take place immediately. Is that not right, Abby?
I think they'll coordinate an orientation.
Okay, you wanna make sure we let Mr. Rodriguez know? There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Contracts and agreements. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A 1312, project agreement with New Mexico Department of Transportation and Aviation Division for the Airport Action Development Plan in the amount of $100,000. John went over this also on Tuesday. I don't have anything to add to that, so...
Mr. Chairman, I may, I would like to make a motion to approve the Agreement Number A 1312.
Can I second? His motion is second to approve A 1312. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Agreement Number A 1313, Program Work Plan in Agreement with the United States Department of Agriculture Wildlife Services for the Integrated Wildlife Damage Management Program in the amount of $27,500. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the Agreement Number A-13-13.
I would second that. His motion is proper second to approve Agreement A 1313. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Resolutions. Approve or disapprove Resolution R 1326, authorizing the execution, delivery of a loan and intercept agreement with the New Mexico Finance Authority in the principal amount of $708,684 for the purposes of financing cost of purchasing, constructing, installing a public building at the county fairgrounds.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R 1326.
Can I second? His motion to approve Resolution R 1326. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Boy, this goes a lot faster than John did. Okay, approve or disapprove Resolution R 1332, adopting the Grant County ADA Transition Plan. We really appreciate the county attorney and Justin going through and doing that for us, so...
Appreciate your time.
Nothing has changed since Tuesday.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve Resolution of R-13-32.
I would second that.
His motion to approve R 1332. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye. If you didn't hear what she had said, is that nothing has changed since Tuesday.
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution Number R 1333, adopting the Grant County Title VI Program. Yes?
I did complete a couple more sections that I've mentioned that I was still working on with Cory Caminos. I think if you look at your bottom tab, I put some tabs on there. We completed the...
Hold the little purple tab.
Yes, sure.
Okay.
We completed the system-wide, excuse me, system-wide service standards and policies section. Just the last two pieces of that were vehicle assignment and distribution of transit amenities. And essentially, we just described how we approach those. It's not a real stringent policy. And then I also completed adding in the information that I collected from the employees at Cory Caminos in regard to how many times or what languages they encounter in providing their services, and do they speak Spanish themselves, those types of questions. I added that into our analysis, the four-factor analysis, to determine our needs. So that's added in there, and the information has already been also been added to the survey data that you can find in the attachments.
Okay?
Okay.
Any questions? Okay, it's a pleasure.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number R 1333.
Can I second? His motion is second to approve R 1333. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Approve or disapprove Resolution R 1334, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan and intercept agreement with the New Mexico Finance Authority in the principal amount of $245,657,000 for the purpose of financing the cost of purchasing a water tanker for the use of the Pino Salto Volunteer Fire Department. That's all paid for out of fire funds. We talked about it on Tuesday also.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve Resolution Number R-13-34.
I would second that.
His motion to approve R 1334. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And approve or disapprove Resolution R 1335? These are budget adjustments, year-end budget adjustments to get funds back hold. John went over these on Tuesday. Is there any question?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number R 1335.
Can I second? His motion to approve Resolution R 1335. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. At this time, we are going to recess the Grant County Board of Commissioners, so I'll take a motion to recess. So move.
Second.
All those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
We stand in recess. I call to order the Grant County Indigent Healthcare Claims Board. We are not actually sending the money to the state for these, we are just approving the claims. There are 1,026 indigent claims for $536,741, and 15 claims to out-of-county claims for Grand total's 1,041 claims, 581, 305, O2 is the dollars. Take a motion to approve those claims.
For clarification, we're not gonna send anything as far as the top, the top, but we are on the others.
We will pay the out-of-county claims.
Right.
That's correct.
$44,500.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the April 2013 health plan claims.
Second. His motion is second to approve the April 2013 health plan claims. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can I get a motion to adjourn the Grant County Indigent Healthcare Claims Board? So move.
Second.
All those in favor, six and five, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call back to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners. At this time, we'll stand for county reports. Sheriff, do you have anything to add? All right, okay, Alfred?
Yes, sir, I do. I have a couple of things. Steve wanted to know about that, he couldn't be here, but he had a meeting with the property taxes this afternoon, and he did want to let you guys know that he did wire the money for the hospital, so it's gone, paid off and everything. But he did want me to read a statement here that I'd like to give to you first, if you don't mind, please.
Sure.
He asked me if I would just read this to you, excuse me. I guess on Tuesday, he wanted to make a comment, and I guess the gavel had been hit, so he wanted me to clarify something, if I may, please. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, first of all, I would have liked to have been present today, however, Property and Tax Division has scheduled meeting for Union elected Treasurers for this afternoon, Thursday, 20/23/2013, at 1:30 p.m. in their offices in San Rafael. At the work session on Monday, there was some comments made that needed to be addressed. My attempt to get the attention of the chair prior to the adjournment of the work session fell short, and I, as I was told, you, excuse me, you realize that there were already adjourned. I believe that the issue is an important one, and needs to be part of the public record. It was obvious by the initial comments that there was a misunderstanding about what was occurred to this point. It is imperative, and it be known especially to the general public, that the job descriptions that I spoke about have been implemented by Human Resource Department, but no input from our office nor input from the union. They are not complete and not fully representative of the actual work being performed. Our intent is not to circumvent the process nor undermine the bargaining process. However, it is necessary that these issues be addressed now, as we have attempted to do in our budget requests, and not after the fact, and be told that it will have to wait for future negotiations and later budget cycles. Your attention and consideration in this matter would be greatly appreciated. Respectfully, I'm a senior executive, Steve Adamandis, Grant County Treasurer, so he wanted me to relay this to you. Do you have anything to add? No, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Sessler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have no report to say anything. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Moore?
Uh, yeah, I've got one thing I'd like to discuss. You know, and I think this is important. We've been dealing with an issue the last few weeks in reference to the hospital. This commission took action as we saw fit. The board has taken action as they saw fit. Now, it's really important, because it's not about us, the commission or the board, or the administrative staff of the hospital. This is about the public. This is about the people who need services. This is about the health of this community. I, I can't speak for the other two, take my hand out to the administration, let them know that I want to work with them, but it is a cooperative effort. Communication is very, very important. We must move forward as a governing body, not only this one, but the one at the hospital, to heal and make better this community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Do you want to add anything?
No, just that communication is the key, and being that we haven't been given, you know, true communication, true numbers and what have you, I would have to disagree with what the board did, but, you know, nonetheless, we have to work together and continue to move forward and work for the public, and continue to have the hospital provide the proper service needed to our constituents and to the public.
I agree. I think that you've got to remember that we were not in the three-hour executive session that they ran, so we're not privy to all the information that was given them, what they learned. I have been told by the chairman that information will flow freely from here on out. That was one of their caveats. So I will support the board at this time until they prove that they can't be supported. So I too would stick my hand out to the board and the administration, and we'll move forward at this time. So that being said, we'll take a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Oh, we're going to executive session, that's right.
Executive session.
Take a motion to go into executive session. We're gonna, limited personnel matters discussing regarding the county manager's goals, job performance, and maybe even some contract. I don't know why that wasn't on there, but...
So move. Second. Can you take roll call, Rob?
Chairman Kasten, are you aware that you'll be entering into executive session?
I am.
Commissioner Ramos, are you aware that you'll be entering into executive session?
Yes, I am.
Commissioner Hall, are you aware that you will be entering into executive session?
Yes, I am.
Okay. We're going into executive session, and we will adjourn from executive session.